Before we go any further, I'd like to try to clarify something. At the last meeting that we said that we would have a community meeting to allow you to inspect the budget and come back at a later time and after you had had a chance to inspect it, but you have not had a chance to inspect the present budget because this budget there has been changes made and the wrong budget was actually presented to you because our clerk was not, was out of town at the time and the wrong budget was introduced, you know, to the city. So the public meeting on the budget will be held next week, but saying that and saying that you're here and that you've taken the time out to and prepared yourself for questions, we would welcome any comments that you have at this time. Yes, Mr. Martin?
So I guess I'll be doing this now and next week, it looks like. We, the people, you, the people, earn our living providing something of value to someone willing to pay for it. Government, on the other hand, does not earn anything. It can only take resources based on tax limits. As taxpayers, we trust our government to make wise decisions with the resources it takes.
Mr. -- Ms. Martin, would you please address the council?
Our mayor's compensation is just over $30,000 a year plus $9,000 a year expense account plus a car and other standard benefits. A move is afoot to increase the salary to $50,000 a year plus the other benefits. The justification for this extra taxpayer burden is that some mayors in other towns are paid this much. So what? Taxes, spend, politics are driving cities into bankruptcy all over this country all the time. That's their bad decisions, not ours. Let's don't do that. Louisiana Department of Labor wage data did not include mayor oral salaries, but I expanded my search to the for-profit site payscale.com and I found a national average of $62,000 for mayors with salaries ranging from $0 to $205,000 for the city of Los Angeles. Taking it on a local level, 92 cities, population 700 to 5,000 people were surveyed and six of them had no salary at all. Only 17 of the 92 paid over $10,000 a year. So out of the 92 mayors in the survey, 75 were paid less than $10,000 a year. No benefits were listed. Cities of our size in deep south states of Arkansas and Georgia are typically paying in the $10,000 to $13,000 range. One can only conclude that our mayor's salary is indeed fair. Winsboro is a great place to live. Good people that work hard, pay their taxes in time, and rely on God to see them through. I beg you, on behalf of these good people, to seize this opportunity to be responsible with their resources.
Ms. Martin, your time is up. You're allowing too many.
Five seconds, please.
No.
To seize this opportunity to be responsible with their resources and keep the mayor's salary where it is. Thank you.
Mayor, council, I just have two quick questions. First of all, our employees that work day-to-day, maintenance crew, street crew, does this budget, will this budget have their 3% raise that they are duly deserved in this? And if it's not, we'd like to know why they don't get any, but y'all would get the raise. And my second question would be, in 2009, there were 54 employees for the city. Now we have 65 employees. That's 11 more employees. Who are these employees? What are they for? And how much does that make this budget expand? And why do we need that? Those are the two questions I'd like to answer, which is a fair question. Thank you.
An answer to your question, we're not including the 3% raise.
I understand that what?
They're not getting the raise?
Excuse me?
I didn't hear what you said.
We are not including a 3% raise.
But is that fair for y'all to have the raise and not the hard-working men and women that are bringing home pay less than poverty rate? And that's what's happening?
Okay. Do you have anyone else?
Is there an answer to that?
All right, what I should do, be recognized by the chair before you speak. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure that I need this microphone. My voice might get it enough. After having had the good fortune of working for the city of Winsboro for about 18 months, I think Renee kind of took my question, actually. I think that I would like to say, I've lived here for 48 years, probably shouldn't say that in public, I can assure you all that no one is overpaid, no one in this city is overpaid from the mayor on down, regardless of your opinion. My concern is the employees that are out there in the 3% raise. I have no comment on the mayor's salary or any of that. It's the guys that are out there in those trucks. It's sad to admit that I did not really pay attention before working for the city to what they do. You know, we drink the good water, we have the good sewer system, we have the great streets, we have fire department, we have the police protection, and what do you ever hear about that? We never hear the negative comments. We never, we never get anything bad. We have some of the best water in the state that's award-winning. These guys ride around in vehicles that should have been retired a long time ago, but they tough it out with no air conditioning and, you know, and they do a good job. They pull off that catfish festival like pros. I've worked in 86 countries. I've seen major productions. They do an amazing job. At Christmas, think about Christmas when you were a child, what it was like here. We were lucky to have a tree in the middle of town. They work for, what, two months from the time they start putting it up to taking it down. They work so hard, but the most impressive thing is they're so proud of what they do. And they are proud of providing the service to you. You know, just in the last few years, what goes on in our parks and recreation has improved a lot, which is a very good reason for the recreation facility that we hope to get. This is because there are people out there behind the scenes doing it. So I ask the council, please, when you're considering this budget, and I really, I haven't even looked at it, so I have no criticisms of any of it, but consider these guys that are out there, what they're doing for us, and the pride that they take in their jobs. We have somebody that are 20, 30 years. So, thank you all. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ken Terry.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Rusty Reeves, Louisiana Rural Water. I just wanted to publicly thank y'all for allowing us to use this facility for our training session we're going to have here tomorrow. We've got approximately 70 water operators from around this area here, training here in Winsboro. Just wanted to thank y'all publicly for allowing us to use this building. Thank y'all, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Open. Comments or close?
May I ask my question from here? I had a question about, I know there are larger concerns than animals on this budget for me, being my background is in finance and accounting. However, I work day in and day out with the animals, so I'm strictly concerned about We are over budget. Actual expenditures you show as 17.5 to round it off with the budgeted $15,000 for everything to do with that department other than capital outlay and salary. So we're over budget, yet we've allocated the same meager $15,000 when a large part of the food for this fiscal year was donated by several different private entities. So in my opinion, $15,000 is not enough for animal control. Yet I do see an increase in salary from 32.7 to 48.6, and the actual was not 32.7, it was 34.2. So I'm concerned about an increase in salary, but I'm very concerned on capital outlay, number one, that every category is zero. So does the city not plan to reinvest in their assets? Any assets? But I know specifically the one that I deal with day in and day out is the animal control facility that has a gaping hole in the floor and many spots that are going to cave in any day because the subfloor is gone. There's nothing but a vinyl overlay in the subfloor. So we will have more than one hole in the floor shortly. Also, we're, the air conditioner has been broken and there's a 5,000 BTU in the window out there that is okay on some days, but on some days it's not okay. I'm not saying it has to be 60 degrees for a dog. I'm saying that with the setting sun on the west side, when an animal's choice is outside in direct sun on 110-degree humidity day, factor in the humidity, that's one choice. And inside, where it's not, the ambient temperature is not according to state regulation, we need to address that. And there's, I don't see in the budget where there's any allocation for capital outlay for the facility. We've been promised that we, you would look into after hours, there's money set aside in a separate fund, not quite sure where that's indicated in this, in these figures, but the account for which I am responsible has $3,000 in it that is specifically allocated toward the animal's welfare. We're not having access now and no one is vaccinating the dogs and no one's walking the dogs, no one is deworming the dogs. So if that could be addressed, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrough. Public comments or close?
Please call for order. Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, would you please leave this affair?
We bow our heads and pray. Father, we thank you for the grace you've awarded tonight. We give you the glory and honor for who you are. And we thank you, Lord God, that as we stand before you, Lord God, that you are allowing us to hear the hearts of your people. We thank you for this great city. We thank you for the things that you're doing in the midst of this city. We thank you for our young people. We thank you for our educational system. We thank you for this council. We ask, Lord God, that you give them the wisdom and the knowledge to be able, Lord God, to lead this city according to your plans and purpose, for what you established it for. A place, Lord God, where families, Lord God, will be safe. A place, Father God, where children, Lord God, will be, will be able, Lord God, to grow. And we just ask right now, Lord God, that you allow your spirit to reign upon the council. All the decisions that's before them, Lord God, they may not have the answers, but you do. And so we thank you that you will impart into their hearts those things that's necessary, Lord God, to be able, Lord God, to be completed and done. And we thank you, Lord God. It'll be a win-win for everyone concerned. We give you the thanks and the praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's all face in the direction of a big flag over here outside. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will allow anyone that would like to make public comment pertaining to any item on the agenda.
I'd just like to bring to the council's attention that this Wednesday, on the 20th, is the expiration time for, we had the penance basically for when the ordinance was passed on the whole time of the dogs. This is regarding the humane ostrich report. And the whole time will expire for, there are 11 of those dogs left. So I just want the council to be aware that their time is up day after tomorrow. Now, the mayor has agreed to meet with me tomorrow to address that since this will be a long meeting.
Approve of minutes for July meeting?
May I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July meeting?
It's properly moved. And second, all in favor, say aye.
I vote no, because I haven't been provided adequate time to watch who have all of what they say.
Excuse me?
I said I vote no, as I haven't been given adequate time to see exactly what they have in mind. I need to feel like I need to.
Motion passed. We'd like to amend the budget to include lease of real property to Lakeside Grain. This is the company that is repairing the grain companies up north end of town that is across from Walmart, Chigley Place. amend the agenda to discuss that ordinance.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss the Lakeside Grain Elevator Company.
I'll second.
It's properly moved and second. Billy. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously. Thank you. Lake Side.
Okay. What we have is Mr. Allader has purchased a piece of property adjacent to Winsboro, proportion of it is in Winsboro, and also he has leased a piece of property at the Winsboro Industrial Park for the corn pod that he has there that will be in conjunction with the, with the operation that we have here at the elevator. He planned to put about $2 million, $2.5 million into this company here in Winsboro, and we felt like that whatever we could do to accommodate him would be to the city's advantage. Also in the contract, it does say that within 120 days, if the city of Winsboro ever needs that property moved, if we need that property for any other purpose, that he would vacate that property.
What's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we accept the Mr. Cobb, the economic advisor's request towards Lakeside Grain.
Should property move? And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Adopting ordinance number 964, lease of airport property.
Thank you, Mayor. The airport property that we're discussing is a loading facility where controlled chemicals are distributed at the airport and the open hangar facility that is out there. And it meets with the, with the approval of the city council and the calls within the ordinance passed by the city council that will allow this to happen. Mr. Shane Hutco will be occupying that facility and he will, he will also do the same thing as, as what Mr. Allader would do. If we ever need that facility for any reason, we have the right to break the contract.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 964, leasing the airport to Mr. Ernest Shane Hutco.
It's properly moved. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that unanimously approved. Adopting ordinance number 965, transfer of property to William Wayne Waller.
Yes, Mayor, and to the council, this is a property that was declared surplus by the city of Winsboro that showed that we, in the long term, had no use for that piece of property, and it was our intent, it is our intent, to sell this piece of property. And it was advertised by specifications of law, and it was advertised with the local newspaper here, and we received bids on that, and the bids were accepted for that, for that piece of property. The proceeds from that property will go back into the funds that was taken out for the Macklemore property that was purchased for the farmer's market.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt orange number 965, transfer of property to Mr. William Wayne Waller.
Should property move?
I second it.
And second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Let the record reflect that is unanimously approved. Adopting ordinance number 967, dedicating Street Rodeque Mary Mars and Fair Avenue Loop.
I'm sorry, we skipped, did you skip seven?
Excuse me?
Skip number seven, Mayor.
Yes, that's dealing with the.
We need to reintroduce that ordinance.
Okay.
We need to reintroduce the ordinance and the new proposed budget with a public hearing being offered next council meeting and any amendments to it we've taken up.
Okay, so we introduce this right here, just the amendment, because like I said, I'm not a.
This is a whole problem, but and then any amendments that the council then could make.
Or we have to still let this sit another 15 days? We can make a change.
Sit another 30 days.
Another 30 days. So could we, why wouldn't we just not accept this one if we don't want it? Go ahead and get the right one in if you want. That needs to be done without, without doing it. We have to find this, probably in the next couple of days, maybe next week.
What happened that we, this is not the order that we're voting on tonight, that we set aside for inspection for the last 30 days. The changes have been made.
With the 3% out, I know that. So what I'm saying is on this right here, if we're going to amend it again, because it's going to be amended again, because I'm not going, I'm not going to vote for that without the 3%.
But would you take it up as an amendment?
What I'm saying, that's still going to still throw us in the same.
No, you can amend, even though this is just a proposed budget. Mayor's salary proposed, chief's salary proposed. The 3% out of the budget is proposed. Council could change it at the next meeting by amendment, and it can be passed. But you still got to advertise it. You've got to call for another public hearing at the next council meeting. Because the budget that was presented has been changed. And it's to be re-advertized and notice given, and if any citizen wants a copy of it, they need to be allowed a copy of it. And my understanding that changes were made a weekend, she was brought up today.
Because the budget that was given.
And I know y'all haven't had a chance to look at it, but you have it in your package. And I know y'all haven't had a chance to look at it, but you have it in your package.
I make a motion that we, what am I making motion for? I want to reintroduce the budget.
To reintroduce?
Reintroduce.
The proposed one.
The proposed one. I make a motion that we reintroduce proposed budget for 2014.
And Rex, that doesn't keep you guys from making amendments to it, nor the public making comments. And then encourage y'all to change whatever part you want to change it.
Well, I want to add, stick to it, we need to have a finance meeting by Thursday. Before we did, yes.
We tried to have one yesterday. I thought we were supposed to have one yesterday at 5:30.
The devil.
Because Thursday's.
We haven't had any finance meeting, any others, but we definitely need to have one this Thursday, the earliest you can make.
Yes. I second the motion.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of ordinance number 967, dedication of Street Right Away for Mayor Mar and Fair Avenue Loop. Billy, you want to go?
This is one that we've been discussing. We were going to, we had a survey. Skipper is very probably more familiar with that than I am, or my mind on this project. But what we're going to do and what we're looking at is connecting Mary Mar back into Fair Avenue, which would be adjacent to the, on the backside of the old garment plant and to the south side of the great bit bottling warehouse facility.
Let's give them right away what we talked about.
Right. It's 15 foot right away that is there. And if something ever happened and the city ever decided to do something with the garment plant facility, then it would give ingress and egress to the old bottling plant facility that where we are actually working with some people to bring them into the city of Winsboro as another entity additional.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 967, dedication of Street Right Away for Mayor Mar and Fair Street Loop.
It's been properly moved. And second, all in favor say aye. Resolution number 14-0801, intergovernmental agreement with the town of Wisner. Chief, you want to press that?
Counsel, what it is, we have some overhead lights that come up some to call it back with Mitch Long, the chief. They've probably been there about 15 years. They'll be used here in the town of Wisner. I want to donate it to them. They need some, and I just was gonna donate it to them. We got probably five that they just want to drill. I just want to donate it to them. They've been up in a storage building, probably at least 15 years. And I think, and I think, counsel, some of them wasn't just bought by the city. They came on some of the units, and some of those things been gone probably 10, 15 years.
The chief, the mayor, with this right here, I've worked with the chief a little bit on this project. And what it is, it's again, it's surplus property that we've not advertised as surplus property and not taken bids on, but it's property that is in our warehouse facility at the police department, where we will transfer the ownership of that property from the city of Winsboro to the town of Wisner. The mayor and the city council on each party would approve the transfer. And the town of Wisner would approve the receiving of that property. And it would be their property to as intergovernmental agreement.
Mayor, I move that we transfer our ownership of three surplus police light bulbs to the city of Wisner Police Department.
I second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor say aye. Do everyone have a copy of the appointing committee? Everyone's in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
One of them is better here.
Okay, there's no one here from the engineering company to help give us a note feed on the farmer's market.
You like me to do that for you, Mayor? Since Denman is not here, Denman engineers has prepared and finalized the farmer's market plans and specifications and submitted to the fire marshal's approval in Baton Rouge. And we went through this with Mr. Skipper, the mayor, myself, and other parties, and made some changes to that where we were accommodating for the farmer's market itself. Also, the engineering fees for this project, and it's done in phases. The construction will be another phase and things of this nature. But the engineering fees has been submitted for reimbursement to the state. And the state has all the documentation they need to send us back the money that we have spent on engineering fees.
Make motion to accept the farmer's market.
Second. And second, all in favor say aye. Okay, announcement of adoption of mileage rate. Millage rate. Millage rate for 2014 at 1615. 2014 public meetings.
We just have to announce.
We just have to announce it.
That's what we have the next meeting. We have to advertise it, so we'll have to make a paper this past week. They changed the rules up on us.
What order? Did I miss that?
No, we just have to announce that we're gonna have to, since we all know that it's gonna change or it's gonna stay the same on the next month's meeting.
So Mr. Airy, if you can get to next meeting.
We said it right in the paper that it will be announced at the next month's meeting.
Mayor Meyer. Engineer.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I'll be very brief here tonight. Two things for y'all to thank about, to look at. First off, the 8th Street Bike Trail, we did start construction on that project in May last week. They actually haven't begun digging dirt yet, but that stuff come this week. They started mobilizing to the site today. So let the public know there will be some disruption along 8th Street for the next probably about five weeks as they're doing construction there. So please plan your route to and from Stool and Work in the mornings and in the afternoons accordingly. We'll try and minimize that to the extent possible. The second item is 2015 street improvements. I'm sure most of y'all are aware that we did not get funded for our CDBG project this year. So we have money that has been generated from the sales tax for street improvements. So we're looking to do a street improvement project coming up in next spring. You were each given a map along with your handout there this evening that has all the streets in Winsboro showing the ones that we have completed to date, also the ones that are still left to be done. There's a few streets on there that are called out as proposed. Of course, this is just proposed, so anything that you, any questions or comments that you have, please let us know. More than above, yes, ma'am.
I have victory. Priority one would mean it's gonna happen in 2015?
No, ma'am. Priority one, two, three, four, and five. Now, really, this might be the first time you've seen this map. Actually, the first priority I had in 2007, whenever the sales tax passed, it might have actually been before that. We broke down each street in Winsboro and scored it based on priority one, two, three, four, or five. Those priorities actually haven't changed since 2007, even though things on the ground have changed since then. That's just kind of a placeholder there to kind of give you an idea of where things stood whenever we first did this. The actual, I guess what you really want to look at is the ones that are solid, solid lines. Those haven't been done yet. Also, the ones that are, say, blue and green stripes, red, blue, and green stripes also have been done. The ones that are black stripes there have been done. I'm sorry for y'all, those of y'all that don't have a calendar, they just don't know what I'm talking about. But that's the key points there. Yeah. Priority one was worst streets, priority two, and then two, three, four, and then five were the ones that were in the best condition when we first assessed them.
We was collecting money, it was fraud happening, the prison, those streets, the combination was collecting. I'm sitting over there, sitting next to her. Let two been come out, let two come out. I don't know about 13.
Can I ask you a question, Mayor? Have you got these streets that's gonna be resurfaced with that asset sales tax? You got it drawn on the map?
Yes, sir. We have a map, I believe it's the current one. But there was a blow-up map at the mayor's office, and I believe y'all have one at City Hall too, am I correct? You can go to either the mayor's office or City Hall, and there is a map there that y'all can look at. It might not be the current, because we had the streets that were drawn on there and proposing for the CDBG project, which didn't actually pull it to you. But as far as what's been completed, that is on that big map and what's proposed in the future.
Are we gonna do some this fiscal year?
Yes, sir, this coming up fiscal year. We don't have time this calendar year to do anymore, because we're gonna be getting into the wetter months here in the next couple of months. Even if we did something today, it would still take us probably a month and a half to two months to go to construction, which puts us into the winter. So we don't want to be doing that. We've tried that before, and it didn't turn out well for us. So we're gonna try and do that first spring next year.
But we will have some side side with the.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Please take a look at that. And if y'all have any changes that y'all would like to make, let me or the mayor know. And I'd ask at the next council meeting, you know, you don't have to make it, you know, just pull me aside and let me know what you'd like to do, and we'll put our thing together and come up with a plan.
We'll discuss it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You may, officer, report.
Number dog, the doctor for the month, two, thirty-three for the year, claim, three, nineteen for the year, foster seven, thirty-four for the year, rest state, total new dogs, eighteen, one cat. Total handled for the month, thirty, one cat, and a P and fifteen, total dog for the year, one ninety-eight, cat, nine, and a P and fifteen, two Miss Lanes, five hundred pounds, dog for the year.
Mayor, I have a question that I want to ask. Have we been able to implement that after hours with those dogs we've been previously discussing in July? On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we talked about.
Correct. Have we? Okay. We need to work on that quite a way.
Actually, I'd like to maybe put that in the form of some kind of motion from the council that on Tuesdays and Thursdays, that the pen be open to the public for adoption or for the people to go out walk the dogs. And we could change Russell's schedule to working time.
The rule for that was, I think that the one that we had to do is time, that's how we get his hold of it. And we're gonna change that time for his time on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Or we're gonna adjust the best schedule. As long as we say they got the budget still for a time.
And we'll be another 30 days apart from the budget, in the meantime.
But we need to adjust it somehow right now, we need to adjust it somehow right now, until we get that done, to come back and do the adjustment between, until we get that on board.
You're right.
Can we temporarily change the hours of the pen on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
We can adjust it based upon, you may, officers. What do you think, Russell?
It's right here, on my hip.
Uh?
The one I got hip me?
Yes.
Change the hours?
We was basically looking at on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10 to 7, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. That would allow them time to come up during the time of vaccinating the dogs, walking the dogs. And it still would've been eight hours, but just bring it.
He would've come on later.
He's 14, isn't he?
No.
We'll get back to him now. We'll get back with him on that.
But I have a motion on the table.
Excuse me?
To actually change the hours that Russell is working on Tuesdays and Thursdays on a temporary basis till we get the budget amended to be from, say, five to seven or six to eight.
We can talk about that, okay? I'll work with you, we can talk.
We need to go and adjust that now temporarily starting now. We need to be starting that. I know we probably can't, trying to start it tomorrow, but we need to go and run that now. We got 15 days, we're looking up on this new budget. We meet Thursday with the finance committee. But it's been already over two weeks now, I guess, already.
Why can't we put it in the form of a motion?
We gotta come and do it and get that, because that's gonna wind up being with the other person. I'm gonna lock him in over there. Right now, they can just tweak it, get it going going now, or tweak it, then when it come on them, change it. But that person there, we change the hours.
So if we're gonna start this for tomorrow, with Thursday, will you be able to do it for tomorrow? Or will it happen?
Can we start it tomorrow, can we?
Probably be Thursday, ma'am. Probably be Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you.
What is your pleasure, with you, you may, officer, report?
I make a motion to be accepted. I make a motion we accept it.
If you probably move in second, all in favor, say aye. Both of both? Our chief on the report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Your month of July, we had four private weddings in town for a total of twenty-one for the year. We had two mobile homes outside the city, total of three for the year. We had zero car hauls for a total of seven for the year. We had four grass cows out of town, total of forty-four for the year. We had five rescues for the year, none for July. We had one hospital call on for the year. We had six businesses for the year, none for the month of July. We had five helicopter assistance. Had one helicopter system that gives five for the year. We had eighteen bar lungs, eleven three for out of town this month. We had one storage building for the year. We had one service call for a total of eleven for the year. We had four mutual aids for the year, none for July. We had one fireworks show for the month of July. We had zero false alarms, which is three for the year. One mutual aid call for the year. Total of six for the town, nine for the parish. A total of one hundred and thirty-one calls for the year since July thirty-fourth, twenty-fourteen.
I make a motion we accept it. Our chief on the report.
If you probably move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Public work, Michael report.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. One of our biggest projects been is last, about two months now, been grassed. Been bad, like everybody else, promoting their own lawn this year. It's been a nightmare. But we just about to get done paying, working on it. Crew's been working hard at it. Machinery's been kind of giving us a little trouble. Been staying up with it best we can. Our spray contractor has came through and sprayed a second application in our main ditches all over the areas down there contracted to do. And that's gonna help us a lot. We have started getting ready to do our sign replacement project. We got that order out to get our quotes in so we can start construction on that part of changing that office design to the city. At this time, we got one of our wells that's down at the booster station. We got a contractor in pool with that pump today. And so it looks like probably we're gonna have to replace that pump that burned up due to a buildup in the fiber making these. They're gonna take a camera and get that bad well lid and if it needs cleaning everywhere, clean that screen while they're in there also. And that's gonna break me pretty much up today, ma'am.
What about mosquito spraying?
We've been spraying for two months, two times a week.
Never see them have much spray.
Well, they do.
I just don't see it.
I move that we accept the public works mighty report.
If you probably move. And second, all in favor, say aye. Police chief, Michael report.
Thank you, Mayor. From July twenty-first, fourteen to August seventeen, fourteen, we had fifty-two criminal charges, total for the year, three hundred and seventy-one. Traffic charges we had for the month of seven, twenty-one, eight, seventeen, fourteen. We had a hundred and fourteen traffic charges for the month, a hundred and fourteen. Total for the year, two ninety-one. Highway accidents, we had eight. Parking lot accident, we had ten. The total accidents, eighteen. Calls for service for the month, for the year, six hundred and thirty-one.
Thank you, Chief.
Make a motion we accept.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
I make a motion we accept.
Should probably move. And second, all in favor, say aye. Economic and development.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have gone over a lot of the stuff that I was gonna report on tonight. But we are working very diligently to obtain and do the revenue recovery on our economic development projects that we have in the city. It's vital to us that that has to be prioritized to make sure that we recover all the money that is out there, such as farmers market and other ones that we do have proposed that is in our budget. We're working with Bud bomb again. We're working, we have a meeting set up with Wentzboro Tire and Rubber this week that we're gonna discuss some issues with them. And we have other issues that it's things that we discussed in our closed sessions. And that's all I have on that right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Billy.
I make a motion we accept that development on the report.
Second.
If you probably move. And second, all in favor, say aye. Community center, Michael report.
We've actually had six events for the last month. And one I want to draw particular attention to was a meeting with, what's his name? A meeting with someone from a representative actually from David Bitter's office who came in for about an hour and spoke with some folks who came and answered whatever questions that they wanted to know about different programs or whatever that were going on in the state. And I think one of the biggest things was suffering with the wetlands. And I can tell y'all women wanted to be here because they were grilling quite a bit. So we've had, of course, a family gathering, a classroom reunion. We had the clerks agency came in and did an insurance meeting. And we had the representative from David Bitter's office to repass and one wetland section.
Have we been able yet again to set up a Wi-Fi in this building? I've been asking about that, I guess, the last two meetings.
I'm not authorized to do that.
But have there, Mayor, what is the holdup with us about the Wi-Fi in this building? Were you working on Wi-Fi?
I'm not authorized to do that. I can't call AT&T. I think it had the plug. But I think with the changes and stuff that we was going through and we were switching. And I think, did I mention it to you briefly?
He said we were gonna set up a meeting with Rex and Kay and get that right.
Yeah, but I changed the committee so I waved on that. So to see.
It was in between times with the clerks. And the phone representatives will only talk to the person who's on the actual field. And so at the time, Julia was in the hospital. She was sick. It was in between clerks. So now Sheila's name is on there. Now she'll be able to do it. At the time, they had to talk to Julia, and she wasn't able to.
Well, she did call me, and then she said she was gonna sit down with Rex and Kay and find out exactly what they wanted.
And I don't think Leonard Steele wasn't on it at the time. I think I talked to you.
Right. You're not still with him.
The only thing I said, we need standard Wi-Fi because to compete with this building right here, you look at these events here, if they're doing presentations, we have the board and everything. If they're doing presentations in here, if it's a PowerPoint presentation, they have email, but they need Wi-Fi. The amount that they're paying to this facility and we're competing, we need Wi-Fi. We can make it accessible with all the other technology. We need to have the Wi-Fi in here. Because you have a lot, there's been a couple of events in here where they tried to do slideshow. You tried to do all that, and at least it couldn't do it. And so, but since it's already technology savvy and ready, so we just don't have the Wi-Fi.
I think she just mentioned the computer, Wi-Fi, and some other things. And she was just gonna get a whole list of exactly what you all wanted, so we would know exactly what we needed.
I think it just, maybe a proper communication to really kind of feel through because I had all the records. So I just hadn't got back to checking on anything. Something that we'll look into right away, though.
You want to get a list of exactly what you want over here, like is it a computer? Is it the cameras? Because it's not the cameras.
Y'all were setting up the offices to talk about. They had to compute. They had to do to set up the surveillance cameras. I was about that at one time. Some said put in the police station. Said we need to have an office set up back here. But the deal that we continue to talk about was the Wi-Fi for those rented facilities. And they're having good this year for the fact they ain't going to come. You know, we need to have Wi-Fi in this building.
Are we set up in the office?
He had fixed with the cameras.
He's done all the cameras. It's the monitoring system that he's finishing now. So now he has to come over and put in a system over in our offices where he can watch from the monitoring system. But the camera systems are all set up.
Wasn't that all part of the center of Wi-Fi?
The other question, the other question, Mayor, that I have that's concerned with the center, have we waxed these floors, stripped and waxed these floors this year? Because this area in the foyer right here, I mean, those sprays and stuff, I mean, it's a little challenge.
Yeah, it's big waxing. Quite a bit. You got people in here with high heels, shoes on. You're not gonna control that. It's just pretty impossible.
We recently got a quote, got a quote on waxing the whole floor like maybe a month ago. But we're getting like maybe three more because that one was a little steep for us. So we recently got a quote because the mayor wants a little military, like.
Yeah, I know the shine, but even when we're discussing the walks on the facility, we don't have a clause or nothing. Those deals gonna happen. But each year, we need to at the end of each, going in the office or whatever, once a year, we strip them and then come back in and wax. And I know that at least lasts at least a good six months.
I think it's probably gonna need to be done more than once or twice a year, especially during the high traffic times in the summer.
Because it won't last six months, Councilman. It won't. Not in here. I know in here, like the back of my hand, it won't last six months.
Because I've seen it done, right after it's done and after two events, and then it's back. So looking like this is strictly in the government.
How often do we have to buff the ones that wax? Do we come in and buff them?
I have Mr. Jail Crew do that frequently, all the time. Not only just buff, mop. And occasionally, I have them putting wax down. So as to your question, they need lots. They like.
Don't we pay some floor company something every month?
That's who we got that quote from, that I was talking about.
But what do we pay them for?
City Hall and the offices over there.
Thousand dollars. A thousand dollars a month for City Hall and... You think that this building would be included in that one for that much money?
I make a motion we accept the community center on the report.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. Do we want to get the information in there? Billy's gonna do it. Airport report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm filling in. Russell George tonight is something that I think is important to the community for them to know. We are working on the new lighting system at present time. At the airport, the airport will be closed until October, the first week of October. We have notified FAA, and we have notified Louisiana Department of Aviation of this project. They cannot fly in or fly out of that facility due to the construction that is being done at the airport when we accept. We also are working, all of the pilots, by the way, all the pilots and everyone that is associated with the airport facility has been notified with this. And they are aware of what's going on. It's just gonna take a little time. We're putting in the power units, generators and stuff. We're gonna put those in in case we have a power outage to make sure that we have a lighting system for the aviation people to come in, in and out of the facility at any time. We also are working with Sheila, Russell George is working with Sheila and the mayor on getting our fuel system set up to where it can be a credit card system. All you have to do is drive up there with an airplane and swipe a card as you do at the filling station and go ahead and fill your plane up with fuel. We have a state of the art fuel system out there. We just, the city of Wentzboro, January the first, took that facility back over. We will be receiving revenues from that project, from that facility. And as soon as we get, we hoping to have that completed by the time that the airport is reopened for use. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
I make a motion we accept their report.
If you probably move. And second, all in favor, say aye. The record is black. That is unanimously approved.
Mayor, may I ask a question on the financial? I see you said we have those in one week. But I ask the question, what is the holdup of what happened this month here on the financials?
Budget area. Budget, the time effort that's been put into the budget. It's been tremendous, nonstop, weekend, all day, day and night, has been given. The time and effort has been put into preparing this budget.
When will we have it in our hands? When we go have a meeting a week from today to next Monday? When will we have that in hand?
The budget?
No, the financial.
The financial report. That was, what date did you put that?
We need to have a special call meeting before that one week so we can have that at least. If we do that within a week from today on Monday, we need to at least have that in hand by Thursday. To give the council an opportunity to look at this.
It's tough. I'll always take the financial report.
I'll do as much time as I can by Thursday when we need.
You have it by Thursday?
I'll do as much as I can.
We're working to have a record.
As much as you can, you gotta have a break. We don't have to.
You go get them in the meeting. They call a special call meeting. We get that, and we go to. That's the key. That's the main thing.
I agree with you, Rick. But we've been on some very unusual situations, very unusual. And I understand you, and I appreciate your patience that you've given us. And we have not abused the time period. We have really worked diligently to meet our goals. I promise you we have.
So that they'll be in hand at the finance meeting on Thursday? The financial, we have a financial ready on Thursday.
They will be complete. You said, I'll do the best I can. Like you were not sure that you could have them completely done or like they would.
Keep everybody away from the door.
Stay away from the door, Mayor.
Motion to throw in?
Second.